After seven o'clock on October 1st, 2012, I call a meeting to order. First we'll start with a motion to admit. Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, I have the following persons to be admitted to the meeting. Greg Valioponis, Lily Vale, Darren Klein, Robert Brooks, Carol Pearl, Ayeen Promis, Tom Blastin, Hal Nelson, Kevin Willis, Ralph Carbone, Kate McCandry, Phil Haley, Helena Minton, Marion DeKay, Debbie Carbone, Wayne Harada, Michael Murphy, Allison Olson, Martin Fear, Eugene Torre, Susan Magga, Maureen Stevens, Ashley Troopman, Erica Hanson, Paul Brinkman, Richard Cottavelli.
On the motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Just a couple of housekeeping items while our guests arrive. All registered voters should be wearing a purple ribbon. All guests, unless you're sitting with a board down in front, should be seated to my right. Town department heads and committee members may sit in the first three rows in the center section. All visitors should be wearing a black badge. Should we need to do a hand count tonight? I have three tellers. Counting to my right and the front section will be Shep Spear. Counting the center section will be Marcy Bailey. And counting to my left, Mr. Brad Jones, Sr. At this time, I'd like to call on Chairman Delaney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Delaney.
Aye. The Pledge of Allegiance, within the life of the United States of America, is to be followed by what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. I'll let the take a motion to discuss at the reading of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I move to discuss at the reading of a warrant to refer to the auditors by number and purpose to discuss the reading of the return of service by the council.
I have the motion and the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article one, Mr. Frisco.
Good evening, folks. Most of you probably don't recognize me without my dress on. I'm just looking like Frisco. Article one, I move to hear reports of town offices and committees as made here presented at this meeting.
I know we have two report, at least two reports this evening. The first will be from the Secondary School Building Committee Chairman, Mr. Chuck Karucci. Mr. Karucci.
Just a little report on how we're doing with the schools. We have finished phase one, which was moving the modulators and doing the site work at the middle school. We are now on to phase two, which the bids are going out this week to do the high school foundation and also the rest of the remaining on the site work on the project. We are on target date right now. I don't know what's going to happen when we get to the winter, but right now we're on target date. And that's it. Thank you.
I believe we also have a report from the wastewater study committee.
Good evening. I'm Paul Brinkman of the Ray Kew consulting engineering company. I'm going to give you a quick rundown of some of the things that we've been doing for the last few months. Here we go. I'm going to try to keep it pretty brief. We've done a lot of activity and we've been looking at all different types of things that have been going on. We've been looking at the water system, the wastewater system, and the stormwater system. Each of them, they're all rolled together, they all have interrelationships, and that's why we're looking at them all together at once. As far as the water side, we're looking at other sources of water. Is there a place to add redundancy to your system? Is there a way to reduce supply costs? You already get a lot of your water from the town and over at a fairly high cost. Is there a way that we can moderate that, to manage that a little better? And we've been talking recently with the MWRA, and they have a lot of additional capacity available. They're also very supportive. They're looking for additional customers at this time. So we're looking at trying to manage the capital costs to make those kinds of connections and compare them to what the cost of dealing with the wells and the sources in town. Some of the issues regarding that is we've got to look at how to get the water in from MWRA. This is a map that shows Wilmington and Redding both get their water now, so we have to figure out how to connect and what might need to go into that. Again, we're looking at the buying cost, the on and cost, and how easy is it, what kind of supply can we get? On the wastewater side, the town's been spending a lot of time over the last few years looking at how to deal with wastewater in a sustainable and affordable manner. And currently in town, you have that one wastewater connection basically on the Wilmington line that serves that property down there. But you've also been doing this planning, looking at an in-town solution, and it was really looking at the area in the center of town as well as basically a good portion of the western half, using a town wastewater treatment facility. And then it would be distributed through the town to a number of sites and pushed back into the ground. We thought, is that the right way to go? Does that make sense in the long term? So what we did is we basically did what we call is a fatal flaw analysis, seeing is there any other option to do that rather than keep doing it that way, keep advancing that program. And with that, we're looking at, you know, what are the costs? This IDTA, which is dealing with water, moving it in the in-switch basin and moving it out of the in-switch, and then the NEPA process. It's a very elaborate environmental permitting review process. The same time, we were looking at the way that we were looking at going forward with the wastewater, an in-town solution, and comparing those. So with that, our fatal flaw analysis, we looked at all the nearby treatment plants, the large ones, that might have potential, that you might be able to connect to. And with that, we looked at MWRA, the Lynn Lawrence Sewer Commission, South Desic Sewers District here, and Gray Lawrence, and basically compared them all to the in-town option to see what were the costs, what were the challenges to deal with that. So given that, through our analysis, we came up with, it looks like through this analysis that the GLSD option is certainly more cost-effective and has a good chance of being permitted. And this is looking at water, looking at stormwater, all at the same time. And so we're looking to advance that particular option at this time and evaluate that a little more. What are the benefits? Well, we're looking at, you know, improving the In-switch River, that a lot of people challenge about the In-switch River, it's getting better, but there are ways to do that, improving Marcus Pond, sustain the commercial businesses, try to make it a little more vibrant, a little more sustainable, and increase the tax base and stabilize the revenues in the town by implementing a sewer system. On the stormwater side, there's been a lot of federal action, and the town has been slowly ramping up to meet that federal action. Currently, there's a need to update the mapping, and so Article 10 is asking for funds to improve the mapping system in the town. And just some of the other activities that there's a concern with is this basically unfunded mandate that people are talking about, the new permit that's due to come out later this year. And it could have as much as $150,000 a year of cost for a town that's not being covered by anything right now. So with that, there's some considerations for stormwater utility. So I've talked about all these things, and they basically all have overlap. The overlap comes to with the In-switch River. They all, the wastewater slowly gets in there, the water you're getting from the In-switch River, and the stormwater runs there. Making sure that they're all nested together, that they're all fought about in an integrated manner. So we're looking at an integrated water resource management plan, which looks at all the issues regarding the water, stormwater, and wastewater system, and what needs to be done. How do we make that better and how do we provide a full solution for the town? So some of the things that we have to do with that is we have to go through this NEPA process, which is a couple of year process of getting approvals from the stakeholders, getting the environmental regulators on board, getting everybody to agree with the plan, going through the planning process, and then basically if you get to, you're allowed to do what you want to do at that point, but you have to get them all on board, so that's what this process requires. So we're looking at a fairly long schedule to start to implement this stuff, and there are some costs in order to do that. This is just a snapshot of where we are, what it looks like moving forward. So in conclusion, right now, we're looking to, we're going to advance the Integrated Water Resources Management Plan. We're going to, with the GLSD, looking at GLSD as the option for wastewater, the preferred option. We're going to be looking at MWRA water and looking at the cost, whether that's a more affordable cost, a more sustainable cost, where you're part of a larger entity, things tend to be a little more stable, and you have a better supply, and doing stormwater improvements. So the next thing on our task right now is basically to file E and F with the NEPA office and basically start the process of going through the permitting process and the approval process. And lastly is to look at Article 10 and provide the funding in order to enhance the stormwater system and make sure that that gets up to snuff before the new permit kicks in later this year.
Thank you. Are there any other boards or committees seeking to make a report? Okay, we have the motion, you've heard the reports, further discussion?
Forest Street Committee. I was going to do that. Any? Sorry, you have to do it here.
The Forest Street Committee.
Hi, I'm Scott Stinson. I'm a member of the Forest Street Committee. Forest Street Committee was restructured in 2008. Chairman's Dana Rose and Vice Chair Steve Nathan and myself are the secondary, and we oversee and try to manage the forest on some of the town land. What we've done lately, we've commissioned a forestry plan for the land on what we've called the town forest, which is made up of land controlled by the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the conservation committee up here around Swan Saun Brooke. We have, in the spring, executed an improvement cutting on that land. The town received income from that cutting in about $6,000. That cutting was on a portion of the land and took about 20 percent of the trees in that portion. And tonight is an article out of the 14 that establishes a revolving fund that that money would be placed into that we and the other committee, school committee, up the committee board, would then draw on sort of various purposes. Just to give you a quick look at what things look like up there before the cut. Been a long time since there's been any management done up there, part cutting. Things are growing pretty dense. You can see a lot of downwood and certainly potential fire hazard. After the cut, there are some clearer areas up there now, and I think importantly, some roads were established that the fire department could get in on if there ever was a fire and things like that up there. The cut was done on a portion, about 20 percent of the land, and going forward, we would be looking to implement a second cut up there probably in the, within the coming year on another 20 percent portion of the land. We would also order to commission a forestry management plan for other town land, the land around Eisenhower Pond and the renamed Smith Road. The article tonight out of the 14 would establish a revolving fund that could be drawn upon to fund the hiring of foresters to make the forestry management plans more. Thank you.
Any other committee or board reports? Seeing none, we have the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article two, Mr. Frisco.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $242.41 to pay prior year bills as specified in Article two as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Frisco.
Board of Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Foley.
Could you clarify the source of funds?
Source of funds is from raise and appropriate.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Vino.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Vino, 11 Rock Street. I heard the sum of $242, what's printed in the article is $142.
The article states to pay prior year bills. The description states $142.41. The actual amount of the bill to be paid is $242.41.
Okay, thank you.
This requires a fourth, fifth vote as it's a prior year bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is it one, what are we voting for? Is it in the, is it in the article or is it not?
We're voting for the motion of $242. I'll call it again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article three, Mr. Messeria.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the FY 2013 operating budget voted under Article seven of the June report in 2012, the annual town meeting as follows. Line cloud, salary pool, raise and appropriate $40,000. Line 29, pensions and benefits, transfer from recreation revenue $5,577. Line 31, police expenses, raise and appropriate $3,377. Line 32, police capital, raise and appropriate $82,280. Line 33, fire salaries, transfer from cell tower revenue $32,000. Line 33, fire salaries, raise and appropriate $42,000. Line 34, fire expenses, raise and appropriate $10,000. Line 34, fire expenses, transfer from cell tower revenue $3,323. Line 35, fire capital, transfer from free cash $21,677. Fire capital, transfer from cell tower revenue $6,000. Line 65, conservation commission expenses, raise and appropriate $9,048. Line 90, debt service, transfer from cell tower revenue $158,677. Line 90, debt service, raise and appropriate $3,337,174. Line 95, Hillview salaries, transfer from Hillview revenue $1,002. Line 100, Hillview debt, transfer from Hillview revenue $14,726. Line 101, recreation salaries, transfer $40,301 from line 102, recreation expenses. Line 101, recreation salaries, raise and appropriate $27,148. Line 102, recreation expenses, reduced by $18,099. Line 103, recreation capital, transfer from recreation enterprise fund, retain earnings $10,000.
We have the motion, discussion. For the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Messeria.
Recommendation first?
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Discussion, Mr. Messeria.
Just briefly to go through, there's a lot of items here. A lot of it was driven by the fact that at our June town meeting, we had scheduled a special town meeting and we didn't achieve a core. And as a result, we made some budget adjustments and with the intention of adjusting those budgets here at our October town meeting, and that's what we're doing. So to be funded by raise and appropriate, that's in other words, available funds in our issue of recreation salaries supplemental, the $27,148, this is the sources of revenue from what I just read. Conservation commission agent expense $9,048. Police department armor vest expenses $3,377. Police department, police cruisers $82,280, and that's for two cruisers. Salary pool vacation buybacks $40,000, the result of some of the contract negotiations that were held last, last spring and that yielded some, some important givebacks from our labor unions. Exempt debt service $3,337,174, that's a lot of money. That's the first payment for the new school, as recall, that was passed in March and we bonded that in early June. Total of $55 million was bonded. Fire department, $52,000. Funded by free cash, fire small capital $21,677. Funded by cell tower revenue, non-exempt debt service $158,677. This is money we're putting into the debt stabilization fund we didn't get to do last June. Fire department stipends $32,000, that's related to the implementation of ALS, and this is for visiting members, when they go for training, they get a stipend for their efforts. Fire alarm small capital $6,000, fire department expenses $3,323. And then funded by tax and recreation revenue, transfer to employee benefits $5,577 that drew up the salary budget, increased recreational expenses by $58,400, and increased recreation salaries by $40,301. This is the result of recreation, which was running as a revolving fund, being turned into an enterprise fund where it's self-funded. Funded by tax and recreation, retained earnings of recreation capital $10,000. Thank you.
George Alondo, 18 elementary road. I just had a question on clarification. I was waiting to hear, but I, I'm not sure that I heard what I'm looking for. For the two police cruisers, are we replacing two cruisers or are we adding two cruisers or just on that? And then on the, the Hillview debt service, just clarification on, I was always under the impression that the Hillview was generating its own revenue, that it wasn't taking tax dollars to pay any of its debt. I, just some clarification on the wording. Thanks.
Mr. Alondo, two cruisers are being replaced. So on an annual basis, we attempt to replace two of the vehicles as they get, these are the mock cruisers, as they get on an age, wear a T S X in, armeans cost to offset, they're more beneficial to replace. So in the budget, it's replacing two cruisers. These are the new model cruisers, and they require, you know, complete outfit of equipment, unlike sometimes certain equipment's been moved from one cruiser to another. You know that Board has stopped making the, uh, help me get the, uh, auditorium. What was your second question, sir? Oh, on a Hillview, back in June, when we had town meeting, we did not know what the exact amount of debt payment would be for some bands that were being converted to the bonds. And this money is being paid for by the Hillview, so this is an adjustment to the budget. The fact that it's an enterprise fund, they still have a budget, and they have to live within the budget. So they have, from their retained earnings, money to cover this additional debt payment now that we know exactly what it is. Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article five, Mr. Foley. I rushed it. Four.
Thank you, Mr. Alondo. I move to fund the following department of capital expenditures as presented this town meeting, pursuant to Article four of the warrant tolling $1,737,644 and transfer from free cash and enterprise fund retained earnings and borrow said sums as specified. In any instance where borrowing is authorized, to borrow said sum in accordance with the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds and notes and therefore as follows. Transfer from free cash to sum of $91,354. Transfer from free cash, the sum of ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars for the purchase of information technology hardware. Transfer from free cash, the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of information technology disaster recovery systems. Transfer from free cash, the sum of forty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of year one of the information technology computer equipment replacement program. Transfer from free cash, the sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the town road improvement program. Transfer from free cash, the sum of fifty-one thousand dollars for town hall security system improvements. Transfer from free cash, the sum of forty-six thousand five hundred dollars for town hall renovations to room ten in the information technology office. Transfer from free cash, the sum of twelve thousand dollars for library exterior improvements. Transfer from free cash, the sum of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for purchase of a lawn mower for the apartment public works. Borrow the sum of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for purchase of the inner software. Borrow the sum of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for purchase and equipment of a Class A fire pumper truck and related accessories. Borrow the sum of one hundred and ten thousand for purchase and equipment of a water department's backhoe and related accessories. Borrow the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the Hillview function facility improvements. Transfer from Hillview retained earnings, the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the improvements to the seventh fairway and purchase of Green's Fairway lawn mower.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Foley?
Board of Selectmen, yes, you approve.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends with one against.
Discussion. Mr. Foley, do you wish to?
Just real quick, the items on this, we got quite a few requests for capital. We did have due diligence and looked when this will be recommended was in the message at this time.
Mr. Stack.
George Sagal, this is Juan Luongo, Chairman of the Hillview Commission. It's our understanding, we had requested four hundred thousand dollars in bonding, three hundred thousand for the facility, and one hundred thousand dollars for improvement on the golf course. That's still a request.
Mr. Barry Constance.
Mr. Stack, I'm sorry, could you repeat your question? I'm sorry, I was responding to something in front of the table.
It wasn't a question, it was a statement. We requested four hundred thousand dollars in bonding, that's what I filled out, three hundred thousand dollars for the facility, and one hundred thousand dollars for improvement of the golf course.
Okay. I would apologize because it was my understanding that the information that we received was that the Hillview had borrowing capacity of three hundred thousand dollars, period, and that the remaining amount would be funded through retained earnings. So if it's the intent of the Hillview, that it was four hundred thousand dollars, we'll accept responsibility for that. But again, it was our understanding, we had three hundred thousand dollars in borrowing capacity. Thank you.
Mr. Luongo.
George Luongo, eighteen inch review. On the items in the list that the source of funds is borrowed, I guess it's Munis software, the Class A pumper, the backhoe, and then the Hillview one has been explained already, but I was wondering if somebody could just elaborate a little bit. We're borrowing money to fund these things as opposed to having available funds, so I personally would find it useful to know what this Munis software is for and the Class A pumper, why are we replacing it now as opposed to repairing it, and the same thing with the backhoe. It seems like we had a significant amount of money, I just, if somebody could provide some clarification on why now.
Mr. Foley.
I can talk about the pumper. The fire chief came to us and gave us a very good presentation. The current engine two is, was purchased in nineteen eighty-five, being twenty-seven years old. It's a seven hundred and fifty gallon tank, pump capacity of twelve hundred and fifty gallons per minute. Currently has fifty-five thousand, over fifty-five thousand miles on it, and more importantly, fifty-one hundred engine hours on it. So being twenty-seven years old, it's time, they spent a lot of money on repairs and trying to keep it going, so we felt at this time, as a recommendation or request of the fire chief, that it was the best at this time to do anything. Yeah, that's a good point. Chairman brings up the fact that on the pumper truck also, it's gonna be a two-year wait to get that truck. If you order it to prove and the chief orders the truck, it's two years before we get it. On the backhoe, we're looking to replace two older backhoes now, trade them in and get one new one as a request of Director of Public Works. Currently it is a nineteen ninety-five JCP backhoe, seventeen years old, it's got seventy-seven Hertz engine hours on it, and life cost repairs is twenty-one thousand, over twenty-one thousand dollars. It's in poor condition. Second one is a two thousand JCP backhoe, which is twelve years old, fifty-four hundred engine miles on it, and forty-three thousand life repair costs, which they're saying is in poor condition. Repair costs currently exceed sixty-five percent of the replacement cost, and so the goal again is to replace the two older backhoes with one new one.
And on the Munis software, Ms. Parvati.
Munis is the town's financial management system. Currently, we do not have all the modules that Munis has in the store. So in order to have a fully integrated financial management system, we need to go forward with the other modules that are available to us, which would include tax, which is your real estate, personal property, tax title, and then utility bill, which is your trash and your water bills. It also will enable us to report better, it will allow us to, you know, have effective, efficient processes in place. And the total cost includes software installations, the tailoring of the forms, which is the tailoring of the tax bill to fit the town's needs, the tailoring of the trash bill and the water bill as well. It also includes staff training and conversion, which is a large piece of the cost of taking our old data and our old system, you know, converting it into format that Tyler Technology, who is the developer of Munis, works.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Maria Nelly, for Martin's Chief. I've just, so about the fire pumper truck, I know we're saying it would take two years to get one, but I just, I don't know how often do we use it and how many do we have that we're gonna need another one?
Keith Wada.
Can you think of one, Fire Chief? We have four Class A pumpers. They're ranging age from five years all the way up to almost twenty-eight years old. According to the ISO, which is the insurance service organization, we need to have four pumpers. One in reserve. What the NFPA says is that any engine that's over fifteen years old and in good service can be put in reserve status. It goes further on to say that any engine over twenty-five years old and not built to the normal safety standards of the NFPA should be replaced. Engine two doesn't meet any of those qualifications. So what would happen is engine two would be replaced, but all the other trucks would back down. So therefore, we would save with the new engine our maintenance costs on the engines that we're using every day. More importantly, our engine three is nineteen years old, in six years, that's gonna need to be replaced too. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Keith Wada. Mr. McGrath.
Ed McGrath, in Law Road. Chief, can you just tell us this will fit in the fire department, we're not gonna have to do anything to it, no?
Funny guy, huh?
No, it will fit.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article four. Line and statute, transfer from Hillview retained earnings, the sum of one hundred thousand dollars, and replace it with, borrow the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for improvements to the seventh fairway and the purchase of a Green's Fairway lawnmower.
Do we have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen on the amendment? Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation? I'll come back to you in a moment, when you're ready.
Just as by way of explanation, again, break down the communication in relation to the funding source, this is just a different funding source for the needed improvements for the Hillview. They can certainly support the additional bonding of one hundred thousand dollars, so we have no reservations in relation to their ability to service the debt. It's a free money, this is the taxpayer's money, this is the only one.
Mr. Paul, for the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion. This is on the amendment now. So the amendment is to change from retained earnings to bonding, the hundred thousand dollars, which is for the seventh fairway and the lawnmower. Seeing none, this will require two-thirds vote for the borrowing. The main motion will, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous on the amendment. Now the main motion has amended, any further discussion? Seeing none, this will require two-thirds vote for the borrowing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now we'll go to Article five, Mr. Foley.
I move to transfer from free cash, the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars, for a complete revaluation of all real property as specified in Article five as printed in the warrant.
The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
Discussion, Mr. Barry Constance.
Just a real quick note, this is a requirement of state law that every three years, your property and town is revalued, so we comply with that by use of hired services and also through the use of our assessing staff. They supplement each other in the use for the purposes of revaluation. I want to just report that the last time we went through this, the Board of Assessors were successful, the revolve was approved, and it was a minimal disruption, so we would appreciate your support. We realize that everyone doesn't like to have their property revalued, but it is something that is necessary.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article six, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article six, appropriated money to stabilization fund, will move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand to be added to the stabilization fund as specified in Article six as printed in the warrant.
The recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends, and if we call your attention to page two of the warrant, that will put us only four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars short of our goal.
Further discussion. This is stabilizations, so it requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article seven, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article seven, transfer funds to the debt capital stabilization fund. Will move transfer from free cash, the sum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It transfer eleven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars from sale of town owned land to be added to the debt capitalization stable. Debt capital stabilization fund established under Article five of the October two thousand and seven town meeting, as specified in Article seven as printed in the warrant.
And the recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends with one against.
Further discussion, Mr. Delaney.
As you can see from this slide, the current balance is extremely low, that was due to the fact that we used four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in June town meeting, because we're unable to have a special town meeting, and so I hope you support this idea. Thank you.
Mr. Stabilization transfer requires a two-thirds vote, further discussion. Mr. Luongo.
The Finance Committee indicated that one person was opposed, so there's could be ever a reason why.
Mr. Walton.
Yes, the reason was that this one person on the Finance Committee, well, one voted, felt that the funds should be, they should be a higher priority on funds going into the stabilization fund, Article six, rather than the debt capital stabilization fund, which is on broader purposes, at least in use over the past few years.
Further discussion. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare a two-thirds vote. Article eight, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article eight, transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars. Transfer from free cash, the sum of fifty thousand dollars. Transfer from health benefits trust, the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars, to be added to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, established under Article fourteen of the October fourth, two thousand and ten town meeting, as specified in Article eight as printed in the warrant.
Further recommendations from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends, would like to note that our current liability estimate is thirty-eight million dollars.
Close, huh? Further discussion, sorry, further discussion, Mr. Delaney.
That's our unfunded liability. We shouldn't be putting this off for generations to come, if we choose this. This is a little bit more the token that we do on maybe an annual, buying or increases, but at least making progress and moving in the right direction. I ask you to support the idea.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash, the sum of nineteen thousand dollars for survey services relating to town road acceptance as specified in Article nine printed in the warrant.
For the recommendation from the Selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Explanation, Mr. O'Leary.
This is just an appropriation, we're looking for to survey some unaccepted streets at this particular point in time. Once we get them surveyed and accepted, this will increase monies from the state for mass and private transportation, chapter ninety funding. For the last two years, Department of Transit has done a terrific job of getting more and more streets into this realm where we're already maintaining these streets. We can get them accepted, and we can get additional chapter ninety funds from the state in order to maintain roads. So this is just an ongoing effort.
Further discussion. Mr. Luongo. Mr. Luongo.
Typically, I heard you say that these streets are already maintained and, I guess, they probably should be accepted roadway, but when a new road is created, whether it's a developed path or if somebody's on an unapproved road and they want to get it approved, why aren't the survey costs on the person that's trying to get the road approved? You know, shared by the residents that are using that road? It just seems as though the town shouldn't have to pay survey fees, that we should be given that information and go forward with that. So just an explanation of why we're dealing with the cost.
Mr. O'Leary.
No, we're disagreeing with your premise, and again, with new subdivisions, it's all done already with the planning commission and the review process and everything. Case, but these roads that we're talking about now, these are roads that have been on the ground and been maintained by the community for a number of years. There weren't necessarily subdivisions, there's not subdivisions at all. Just as an example, Cameron Road, Carolina, Gooey Road, Haywood Ave, MacArthur Road, Poplar Terrace, Plumbie Road, Oak Street, Washwood Road, all small roads that have been in town, been inhabited for a number of years, they're all hot talk and maintained and plowed by the town. But in order to do that, the number of miles that we have, then we seek reimbursement from the state for maintenance and upkeep of those roads. So in order to do that, it's in the town's best interest to spend some money in order to get these money back. All the resources that we're spending here will be replenished in short order in relation to the amount of money we're spending. So it's in our best interest to do it. And directly answering your question, normally we do subdivisions, that's all done upfront, so they get paid for by the developers and all the costs incurred by them before we accept the streets. These are just old town roads that were maintained for many years. It's in our best interest to the community to get them accepted, survey them accepted, so that we can put them in for reimbursement from the state.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous. Article Ten, Mr. Messerius.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash to some of $138,000 to fund engineering studies and all costs incidental and related there, too, in order to assess opportunities and constraints relating to municipal water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure as specified in Article Ten printed in the warrant.
For the board of selectmen's recommendation, Mr. Messerius.
The board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Further discussion. Mr. Messerius.
Just to give you a little more information about what this request is for, you heard earlier in Article One, the wastewater committees report regarding water, wastewater and stormwater. So to get these various permits going, we have to fund all three. The first one, which is water, is being funded from available funds, which the town received as part of the buried property when they built the apartments, we received $150,000, and we have been using that money for consultants and work related to town water. The, I'm sorry, wastewater. Water is coming from retained earnings out of the water enterprise, and this stormwater doesn't have any money at this point in time, and so we're asking for this money to complete this portion of the study. Thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. Luongo.
I'm curious, I mean, obviously plans are being, have been expanded for studies for this water, wastewater, stormwater plan. An additional $138,000 is being asked now, over and above, I assume, what was approved previously for the report that we heard earlier? I don't know, but what's the payback to the town? What's this study has done, and they have a plan? Is there, when do we expect to recoup some of this cost? You know, are we doing things in town that's exacerbating these situations, you know, with new developments or ongoing expansions of properties and floodwater areas? I just, it seems as though we're just digging a very big hole here. I don't, I don't see much of a return for the town.
Mr. Messerius.
First of all, the money that's been requested is to pay for permitting, to begin the permitting process, not necessarily the study. Second is that we had a study done of the additional revenues that we would gain if we had sewer in the commercial districts, because the value of those properties would go up and be able to attract higher-end businesses. Right now we have trucking firms and other types of businesses, and we're very limited without sewer. So the payback is to increase our commercial tax base. That's what this is about. There's a second piece of it that is related to dealing with the issues at Martin's Pond. And thirdly, we have to meet the requirements of the federal government associated with stormwater. So we have no choice but to move forward with this.
Mr. Luongo.
Yeah, a follow-up. On the wastewater and the commercials side, you know, I personally do not feel that the taxpayers are not afraid and should be funding a storage system for the commercial district. And that should be a burden borne by them. Those property owners feel that it would be an asset to the value of their property to have a storage system, and, you know, so be it. My, you know, based on the information I've heard tonight, my, I find it difficult to support this particular article, and I would encourage people to vote against it.
Any further discussion? Sir.
Good evening. I heard earlier this afternoon, a moment ago, this is for the benefit of commercial...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I need name and address.
Oh, yes. By all means. My name is Eric Neenchee. Address 65 Park Street. Thank you. I heard earlier this evening that the reason for this funding is for two aspects, commercial and for increasing the tax base for commercial zone, for commercial districts. I have not heard once anything being mentioned about stormwater in regards to MS4 permits, NFTs, for regulations from EPA. We have in our town, Itchits River, that runs right smack through our town. If we traverse and go on our road along Itchits River, there are many point discharges that dump into our Itchits River. And I would like to see some, if there's any funding, funding being put towards compliance with EPA, MS4 permits within the town, rather than focusing on commercial. As Mr. Luongo had so highlighted earlier, if we're going to be having this based on commercial, we shouldn't, I don't think our taxpayers, our citizens of the district, town should be funding for commercial projects, especially those along the Concon Street area. If we're going to be funding this money, I would just be finding that's going to focus on the constant upgrade of stormwater management through town wealth through NFTs, MS4 permits, rather than commercial. That's the focus. If we, as I said, I love me to reiterate, if we focus along the points on the Itchits River, we see dozens and dozens of stormwater pollutants. You're going to get TSS, you're going to get all kinds of metals, nutrients, phosphorus is being a big proponent here, which the state doesn't even have any regulations on phosphorus removal right now. All these things, nutrients are being dumped into the Itchits River. And through this article, through the conversation, talk about communications tonight, I haven't heard anything that really should be mattered on these important features.
Mr. Priscilla.
Sir, maybe you came in late. In the beginning of the meeting today, we had some presentations, and part of the wastewater water and stormwater presentation, the reason for this article is to fund the work that we have to do to go through the MS4 permitting process. That's what this is related to, to do exactly what you're saying, is a need, we have to do it, we're going to be mandated to do it. And what we're trying to do, because this is a mandate, we're also going to take advantage of integrating this into an integrated plan, so we're looking at water, wastewater, and stormwater all together. When we go over to our permitting to pour wastewater somewhere down the road, this is going to be a player into it. So that's what we're funding here, exactly what you're saying.
Just to, just to make a, I did...
Please go through the moderator. Please, please don't just respond, you need to go through the moderator.
Okay.
Sir.
I apologize. Ms. Moderator, I...
If you'd like to respond, yeah.
Yes, I would. I did, I did come in a little late, so I did not touch, I did not hear about the MS4 permits earlier.
If you want to see me after, maybe we can give you your email address, we'll send you the presentation, so it has a little more of the detail back on.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Priscilla.
So I would just encourage people to vote in favor of this article for the things you just heard.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Article Eleven, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash to some of $5,000 for the expansion of parking for the Third Meeting House located at 157 Park Street, North Reading, including all incidental and related costs as specified in Article Eleven as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion. Mr. O'Leary.
Moderator, the recent improvements made up to the Third Meeting House, the rain garden that's installed up there, if you haven't been by, it's a beautiful landscaping project that's been very successful, and included that with some granite curbing, and to be quite honest with you, with the granite curbing, there was a lot of parking spaces lost, which were normally on grass. What we're looking to do is on the east of the side of the building, closer to the Baptist School, the lower area, it's kind of a flat area, but we're just looking to flatten out and pick up a few additional parking spots, so the ones busy up in the building at the senior center, that'll give us some additional parking where the staff can park, or additional parking up top. If you haven't been by the Third Meeting House, by all means, swing by and see the project, the rain garden included with the grant money, it's a perfect addition to the facility. Would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Further discussion. Just, just real quick, the Article Eleven says fund building on the common, Mr. O'Leary referred to it as the Third Meeting House, which is the proper name, so I'm going to allow it. Mrs. Romeo.
Mrs. Romeo, 253 Maple Street. I have here, just to explain applicable discrepancies, I have a book here that was published by a committee that I headed up in 1975, pointing out that the Third Meeting House was a stop on a 45-point tour of North Reading historical spots. So it was the Third Meeting House in 1975, not the building on the common. It got that name, the building on the common, because late in the 1950s or 1960s, the local range group kind of died, there were not enough farmers to support it, and the American Legion Group also was disbanded. And the selectmen at a meeting which I had attended were trying to name the building because there was some activity going on, and they said that building over on the common, uh, 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 about the building over on the common, and it stuck. And for some unknown reason, this year it cropped up again. I don't know why, but we don't want to hear that again, do we? Because it is a meeting house, and it's a meeting house for everybody, and thank goodness we can still use it, even though it was built in 1829. It's still beautiful, and we still love it. So. And for that reason, I must say, unfortunately, I oppose this article, because we keep eating away at the little bit of town common that we have left. And this article is misleading in the explanation. It says to replace the parking spaces that were lost because of the rain garden. And the rain garden didn't take away any parking spaces, at least not any legal parking spaces, because people used to pull up and park on the lawn. So we do have a beautiful rain garden, and I don't think anybody would park on the rain garden, but we are just simply creating new parking spaces on Maple Street, and that is the historic district. And twice since the school was renovated, they have come back and asked for more parking spaces, and were granted by the flagpole and over on the other side of the school, even though it was promised that once the permission to renovate the school, there would be no more requests for parking. So twice there were requests and they were granted. Now there's another one on the table. So, and because we are in danger of becoming the auto mile of Route 62, or looking very much like a used car lot, I think, I think we need to hold the line. And maybe the seniors should think about carpooling until the town will wake up and give them a decent, decent senior center, because that is not adequate for the seniors that really deserve something better than what they have in one room. They, if, all of you should go out and look at some of the other senior centers around, look at Dancers, and look at North Andover, and look at Methuen. They have wonderful senior centers, and we don't have something that should be adequate for our seniors. So I'm just saying that perhaps they should move out of there and find something better, and maybe the parking will be a different one. Maybe they won't be there always. So let's not create another parking lot on our own town common. We don't need more. So that's my feeling. Sorry if I offended anyone, but that's, that's it.
Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I concur with most everything Mrs. Romeo said, et cetera, of course, urging you to vote in favor of this. Just to remind everybody, this is in the historic district. Nothing could be, no improvements can be made or changes made to that particular site without the approval of the Historic District Commission and anybody that's aware of their works. They're an extremely conscientious group of people who are fairly sensitive to the town common area, its appearance, usage, all the rest. As Mrs. Romeo pointed out, it's a perfect meeting place, it's a meeting place utilized quite rarely and quite often. If we're going to continue to use life, utilize this particular facility in a particular fashion, we need to allow for adequate parking rather than on the laws and on the common area. This project was designed by the town in Janio, was approved by the Historic District Commission on September 10. This project was designed by the town in Janio. It was approved by the historic district commission on September 10th. This year, the approved design has gravel park and granite curb, stability of the new access and equal. I think aesthetically it's going to be pleasing. I think it's going to be functional. And it's certainly a needed addition to that particular facility and I urge you to support it. Notwithstanding Mrs. Romeo's presentation. Thank you very much.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article 12. Mr. Fode.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer for free cash, some of $100,000 to reconstruct, reconstruct or make improvements to a retaining wall located at E.F. Little School and including all incidental and related costs as specified in Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendations for the board of selectmen, Mr. Fode.
Board of Selectmen, unanimous, recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance committee, unanimous, recommend.
For the school committee, Mr. Webster.
School committee, unanimous, recommend.
Discussion, Mr. Fode.
Just a, just a quick update on that is that's a wall that is at the little school at the back of the parking lot. He's down to the softball fields where some of our children play. It's a, it's a hundred foot long wall that has fields in at least two locations right now. And it looks like it could be more. So it was our recommendation. We thought this was very important and should be done as quickly and soon as possible. So we did recommend this and hopefully we can get it passed and then move on against your kid and make it safe for our kids.
Mr. Nelson, are you seeking recommendation? Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm here to present information on Article 12, the little school retaining wall.
If you could move a little to your right.
Thank you. As background, this was a wall that was constructed in the mid-1990s. As Mr. Fode noted, it's a wall that separates the North Reading recreational softball complex from the little school. It's comprised of three softball fields, two sets of bleachers, a concession stand. And while parts of the wall are 100 feet long, the total length of the entire wall that we are presently reviewing is actually about 300 feet. It ranges in height from anywhere from three to 10 feet. There's a couple of pictures that you can see. This area here shows where the bleachers were originally set in to the wall. We've had to move the bleachers out because there's great concern that this particular section of the retaining wall is unstable. You can see some caution tape in the lower right-hand corner of the picture. And the bleachers have been totally moved out of that area due to our concerns about the safety of the retaining wall. This is a second set of bleachers closer to the primary softball field. Once again, you can see the caution tape and you can see the top step of the bleachers. And these pictures are attempting to give you a sense for the length and the size and the composition of the retaining wall and the safety concerns that we have. This picture shows what you might call the dugout. That long bench there is directly adjacent to another section of the retaining wall. It's probably in that section, seven feet high. You can barely see some caution tape because we no longer allow the athletes to sit on that long wall because of our concerns about safety. And we have put the benches closer to the field itself. So what do we propose here? We have begun this process. The school department has footed the costs of a civil engineering firm to come in and to review the entire existing area. We want to very carefully make sure that we have a solution that will last a generation if possible. That same civil engineering firm is presently designing a solution. Their intent is to provide to us stamped drawing that a professional engineer will review for presentation and due by the town's building inspector. The civil engineering firm will also prepare a bid package and manage the job should Tom Meeting accept this proposal. It's really essential at this point to make sure we have a safe area there. It's going to be very important to make sure that this retaining wall is built properly. We want to have proper bracing, which appears at this stage to be lacking. The term used in trade is dead man, which our braces, it holds the wall up against all the hydraulic pressure that the water can cause. It has to be proper drainage. We're going to make sure that all that takes place. The engineer is suggesting to us that the job can be done and bid out for a cost of $100,000. We respectfully ask Tom Meeting's support of his honor.
Mrs. Robinson.
Margaret Robinson, 374 Park Street. Has the design, I don't know about the retaining wall, but have they, has this design looked at incorporating accessibility within getting down to, from the parking lot to that area? In regards to trying to incorporate the retaining wall and rebuilding it and also incorporating some kind of access in that would make it easier for people to get into that area?
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're presently three sets of stairs. At the very least, those three stairs will be maintained. Are you referring to handicap access?
Yes. No chair access or not use of stairs, yeah.
We're going, we feel that we need to put that in hands of the engineer who will be working with the building inspector. The ADA requirements, I don't feel that I can speak to with a lot of level of surety. That's why we're putting the design in hands of the engineer who will work with the building inspector to make those recommendations that that's required and that's appropriate.
Okay. I want it to at least be looked at. A lot of times they're just looking at fixing the wall where it could be, and again, I don't know. It could be very easily incorporated into a plan if someone brought it up to the designer and said, how about we try it this way, would this work? I don't know if they're looking at that issue. That's what I'm trying to bring up.
I'll make sure they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamondo.
George Lamondo, unanimous. I went over to the little school and took a look at this wall on Saturday. And I can't say that I share the same concerns that I'm hearing presented here tonight. And even the pictures that we were showing, I don't think convey that there's a real hazard here. I just would like some background information on, you know, who determined that there is a safety issue and why the area, you know, why the bleachers were pushed out. I did notice in a couple of sections that some of the blocks had, you know, were on the ground. They, but they look like they could easily be picked up and put back onto the wall. The wall is, is basically one of those walls where it looks like it's, it's blocks that are just stacked onto each other. But again, I just, I didn't see anything that warranted spending this kind of money. And if somebody has, has an assessment from a civil engineer or somebody that's saying that, you know, there is a structural problem with the wall, I don't understand why the town using town equipment and town personnel, why we can't fix that. We just advise the purchase of a rather expensive backhoe. It would be good to see it put to good use.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would respectfully disagree with your conclusion, Mr. Lamondo. I've stood there and I can see the wall bowling out. Building inspectors of the same view. Many of the town professionals have looked at it, have enough concern that they asked us this spring to provide safety tape around the wall because they noticed the wall is bowling out after some heavy rains. We've had three engineers look at it. We attempted to see if we could make spot repairs or repairs that would be of a less costly nature. And have been in touch with the director of DCW here in North Reading. It feels that, I believe, feels that the job's beyond the capability and the capacity of the present staff in the DCW. So for that reason, we're looking for Tom Meeting's approval.
Sir.
Chris Sullivan, 13 Oak Road. First, I'd like to say that I am fully agree with the improvements of the wall and the children's safety. I just wonder, is this including, you said that engineers have looked at it. Does this include the $100,000? Does that include a plan for the wall? And will that include the actual building of the wall?
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the engineer, the engineering study is coming in at about $10,000. I know that the school department's covering that cost. The estimated cost of the repair is $100,000. And that will include a development of specifications that will allow us to prepare a bid package and go out to the marketplace for construction company, the horizontal construction company to come in and do the work. So yes, $100,000 covers the construction, the full construction of the project, yes.
Thank you. Sir.
Tom Bag, 19 Oak Road. I have two children over at the little school and both they and myself are involved in the softball league. So we spend a significant amount of time down at those fields. That wall is crumbling. It is a retaining wall, which by its very definition means it has a function. It's not just a decorative wall. It can stuff bricks back in. There was a letter in the transcript that suggested that the kids could collect limestone at recess. It's kind of stuffing holes in it. And people need to understand, in some places, this wall is eight or 10 feet high. At the top of that wall is a paved pathway. People sit up there. Beyond the paved pathway, there's a playground and a parking lot. There's a significant amount of pressure at that particular site. It's not just a decorative wall. And doing nothing is not an option. There's been caution tape on those fields for five months now. And our varsity softball team plays down there and it looks like a crime scene. And we need to do something for safety reasons.
Mr. Nease.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also have coached baseball down that field a few years past. I've also taken a look at this retaining wall. As I said, my name is Eric Mees, 65 Apache. I am also a civil engineer. And I've dealt with many commercial site plans, residential site plans with designing retaining walls. I see it from this slide here, hiring a civil engineering firm. I like to ask the town to correct that, not just a civil engineering firm, though I am a civil engineer. You need to have a structural engineer. A civil engineer and a structural engineer are two completely different people. As far as the retaining wall is concerned, if just for the benefit of the town and as citizens, if this wall is 300 feet long, for this type of block that's out there, it looks like a genest type block, 12 inches wide, 8 inches tall, 6 inches tall. Each block costs about $6 to $8 apiece. With labor materials, you're looking at about $30 to $40 per swift foot for construction of this wall. So you can do the math. So I think that $100,000 is a fair amount. That does not say that I'm for or against this project. I'm stating the facts. As far as the wall itself, the wall is anywhere between, that I see, three foot and over by the far side, up to seven feet tall. When you get a retaining wall that's over four foot tall, you need some sort of geotextile fabric material. Deadman, in parentheses, is probably bracing. I would not go with deadman. I'd go with geotextile fabric material. It's going to be a lot better material. It's going to hold the wall also. As far as hydrostatic pressures in the wall, I have not done any thought to know that there are any hydrostatic pressures or concerns out there. But that existing wall right now shows no daylight, no outlet or any kind of drainage. I do see that there is crushed stone behind this wall. I trust that there's at least 12 inches minimum width down to the base of crushed stone. And there should be some sort of drainage control. I asked the town, this engineering department, if this article does so pass, that it look into these conditions. The only one safety issue that I have a concern of there is a capstone. This capstone that's out there is the wrong capstone. It does not cover the top course of the block. Anytime it rains, you're going to get water right behind the capstone. It's going to lift every single one of those capstones. And each one of them is supposed to be glued down. That is just improper construction. So I would trust that the town engineer and the town would supervise this for the right type of capstone you could put on this. There are a number of capstones out there that are loose and have fallen apart. That's the real, that's a safety issue. As far as the other safety issues concerned, there is a chain link fence behind it. As a civil engineer, I don't see the need for any kind of gondolil system at all because the parking lot is crumbling away from the wall. But I would employ the town to hire a structural engineer, not just a civil engineering firm.
Thank you, Mrs. Nease. Mr. Norton. Governor Norton, 279 Main Street, move the question. Rep. Mosley, move to the question. All those in favor of moving to the question, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous, we're now to the question. The motion is to transfer from free cash, $100,000 to reconstruct, reconstruct or make improvements to the retaining wall located at E.F. Little School and all incidentally related costs as specified in Article 12. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Article 13, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
On the motion to pass over, does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Fode?
Four to one, pass over.
Four to one to pass over. Board of Selectmen voted four to one to pass over. For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance committee recommends to pass over.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to pass over, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
I should have known. Motion carries. Article 14, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash, some of $5,000 for the preparation of forest management plan of town property and to support public education programs and services established by the forest committee as specified in Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
The recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Prisco.
Board of Selectmen recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance committee recommends, I would like to clarify that we read that this does not establish a revolving fund.
Mr. Prisco.
That's correct. In the presentation that you heard in the beginning of the meeting, the mention of a revolving account was in the presentation. That's not true. This is actually general fund money. This would be general fund money going to the forest committee to use, to help them continue a program that they've already started up in Swamp Pond. They're actually going through it. They have a sectional land they're working on now. They've already done one. They're doing five phases. They've already finished one. It actually raised about $5,000. We get the cells of timber that the forest comes in and takes away and cleaning up the forest. They're just getting ready to start phase two. This money is mainly going to be used for the forest committee to continue this study across the whole town, looking at all the town-owned land that we have and make sure our forests are healthy. A lot, you notice a lot of these town-owned lands, abuts the brand-new neighborhoods. We need to make sure that those neighborhoods are safe in the case of a forest fire, that we don't have a lot of density and that catches on fire and you can put a lot of homes in jeopardy. And I'm sure Mr. Rowe is up there to give a little more information on it, which I believe that hopefully that is in accord.
Mr. Rowe.
Dana Rowe, 12 Dogwood. I'm on the forest committee. And I'd just like to read a brief statement here that we're working on long-term forest management. This is not a thing where we just go in and cut, make some money and leave. It's planning for the use of the forest, which is to maximize the long-term income. It's planning for the use of the forest, which is to maximize the long-term income from harvesting activity, maintain or enhance wildlife, improve recreational opportunities, protect soil and water quality, and produce forest specialty products. We've worked with the school committee. I've been in contact with a couple of members of the land utilization committee and other different committees in town. I've talked to the boy scouts, girl scouts. We're asking for assistance on these programs. We're planning trails. We're planning to improve the areas that are in there now. So, this is a long term and a total commitment, and it is supposed to, hopefully, this will make a lot more of the land available to all the citizens. One of the things I'd like to see also, we're trying, we're looking into planning a handicap accessible trail to one of these areas. So, and this money that we're using now has been generated through this program. In the future, we hope to generate more. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Unanimous. Article fifteen, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article fifteen, require a live high school driveway expansion. I move to pass over Article fifteen as printed in the warrant.
On the motion to pass over, board of selectmen have a recommendation, Mr. Delaney.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommend passing over this article at this time.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance committee recommends to pass over.
Discussion on, I'm sorry. For the school committee, Mr. Webster.
School committee, unanimous, recommend.
Any discussion on the motion to pass over?
Just to explain, this land is not necessary to construct the driveway entrance to the new high school, middle school facility. This article may go back up into June. It's based upon the architect and construction manager of the forest. It would ease the construction phase of the driveway entrance if we could pick up additional land to the left side of the entranceway, as you're looking at a property from Route sixty-two. But at this point in time, we haven't identified the exact square foot that would be necessary.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor on the motion to pass over, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Unanimous. Article sixteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article sixteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance committee recommends to pass over.
Discussion, Mr. O'Leary.
This was put on the warrant as a placeholder. It became, the town became aware that particular parcels of the corner of our park and Hable Street may become available for sale at this particular time. We weren't sure exactly what options the town would like to exercise, if any, but we would like to deserve our rights to just take a look at it. It's been premature at this particular time. There isn't any particular game plan in relation to purchasing, who's going to purchase it or not. But again, at this particular time, it isn't, it's been premature. Again, it was looked upon as a one-time opportunity for the town, if they wanted to try and take control of what's gonna take place at the corner of Park and Hable Street. There's three parcels in particular. Two will become available, one was just recently sold. And again, directly puts our public safety facility right at the center of town. Could be continuation common. We're thinking about potential, past recreation area, or just, you know, cleaning up the corner, and the town has control. We don't know if it's gonna come to fruition. It's several months away, and this is just a placeholder at this particular time, and discussion with all the parties has not taken place.
Further discussion, sir.
My name is Merle Weaver, one fifty-eight, Park Street. My question is, who told you my land was for sale? Why would you think it was? And why was it condemned as unsightly? And you want to improve the town by taking my land and my house that I've lived in fifty years? I'm eighty years old, and you want to take my property and make me move? The better the town, I cannot understand how that would enhance the center of town. Now, could you give me an answer? You stated on television that you discussed it with all the people involved. Mr. O'Leary, you never discussed it with me.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, as I just stated, I never stated that I've discussed it with all the party.
Oh, yes, you did.
Like the logic, you're Merle, you knocked it back a long way, and I was, had not approached you because we were not in a position to even talk about it. As far as, you know, your particular parcel of land, not there at this particular time. Talking about the other two parcels, the empty gas station and potentially Mr. Ryan's home at this particular time may become available in the short, short term. I recognize your home, you know, it's been your home for fifty years, I've known you for fifty years. Not, not the case. And again, I was premature to approach you, to discuss it with you. We're not talking about taking this land by any domain. We're not talking about displacing anybody. We're not talking about doing anything of the sort. It was not the plan, it was not the motive, it was never discussed by me or anybody else on the member of the board. If this particular part, if this particular plan were to go forward, it would go through the land utilization committee process. It may go through review, if it's a potential source of funding, it may not go anywhere. What this was, was an opportunity, town wanted to just preserve its right to discuss it. This particular town meeting at the time was right, and it isn't. It's premature. Therefore, we're not moving forward with anything. So, you're absolutely right. I never discussed it with you, because...
You're right. You didn't. You never discussed it with anybody.
I did not discuss it with you. I did not discuss the property with you, because I didn't know how far along we were gonna be able to go in the process. But again, the plan would never be to displace you, move you out of your home.
That's not what you said at the meeting.
That's not true.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
And again, and again...
I'm sorry, I'm an old man, and I just take it, and I'm lying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I would never have done that. I've known you too long, been too friendly, and never, ever would cool place you or anybody else. Just at this particular time, we'd like to pass over.
It's only a long time before the night pass by that.
No, it's a long, long, long conversation.
Let's keep the language civil in the hall, please. Yeah, there were a few adjectives there that maybe, anyway. Ah, an English native to my right. On the motion to pass over, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor passing over, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Unanimous. Article seventeen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of law for the running general bylaw by adding Article two, Chapter one oh four, quote, fingerprint submission requirement for licensed applicants as printed in the handout titled, Civil, uh, Finger Printing Town Bylaw, dated October first, two thousand and twelve, and authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order to meet compliance to the numbering format of the code of law for the running as specified in Article seventeen of the warrant.
Just before I take the recommendations, there were handouts available as you came into the hall. If someone is seeking a copy of that handout, raise your hand, and some of the staff will come down the aisles and pass them to you. Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance committee recommends.
Discussion, Mr. O'Leary. And again, keep your hands up if you'd like a copy. They're coming down the aisles now. Thank you. Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Police Department Police Chief Murphy presented the board with a presentation in relation to the acceptance of Mass General Law, which would allow for a general bylaw for town operating to be implemented, which would require people such as hawkers and peddlers who come door-to-door, manager of alcohol beverage licenses, owners and operators of public conveyors, taxi and drive-living drivers, and ice cream truck vendors, would require them to come to the police department, be sent in for fingerprinting, and then we'd check criminal background checks down on the individuals. Noticefully, outside of this, a little campaign, people like ourselves, does run for office. So, that works, we're gonna give you a quick one. Anyway, Chief Murphy seeking the acceptance of this general bylaw, and as well as my answer and recommendation at this particular point in time, I'd like to call Chief Murphy just to give a brief overview.
Chief Murphy. Nice name. I like the cheap part of Murphy.
Just to give you a little background on the law that took effect on May twelve. Back in two thousand and ten, Governor Packard signed legislation to update and rewrote significant sections of the CORY law. And CORY is an acronym for the law that provides oversight for criminal offender records information system. Among the changes made was a provision that allowed seizing towns to seek a bylaw or ordinance that allows a fingerprint-based criminal offender record information. It's also known as the Civil Fingerprint Background Check. This change, like I said, is going to affect as of May fourth, two thousand and twelve. The acceptance of this bylaw in North ridges would require the North Ridge Police Department to conduct fingerprint-based background checks for applicants for a variety of licenses, which Mr. O'Leary had mentioned. These licenses are identified in the package in the yellow insert at the town meeting. This bylaw is passed, the police department would be required to obtain national record checks on applicants for all the categories listed. These accurate thorough checks can only be attained through fingerprint-based records checks by using the fingerprint-based system. Accuracy is greatly improved. We have an electronic system in place at the police department. These fingerprint-based checks will assist the licensing authority in determining the suitability of an applicant and determining, by determining what their criminal background check is across both the state and federal databases. Under the current system, federal law prohibits the police department from conducting name and date of birth checks on the national database. This law does allow for national checks based upon fingerprint. Each of the occupations incorporated in this bylaw are positions of trust that deal with a variety of key one of number of settings. All these occupations require the town to verify that these applicants are suitable for the positions that they seek. All these licenses are currently issued after a local background check is conducted by the police department, with the exception of ice cream truck lenders, which background checks are done and permits are issued solely by the board of health. Great amount of responsibility is placed on the town in making determination whether or not to grant these licenses to these applicants. These applicants are applying for positions of trust of our community. It's extremely important that the licensing authority faces decision on the most accurate information available. And why I'm suggesting that we adopt this is for the safety of the public. We want to make sure that the, we want to make the best decisions we can with the most accurate and up-to-date information and submit that to the licensing authority. We live in a mobile society, and we currently, as a police department, cannot conduct checks outside of Massachusetts. So, to give you an example, so we, as a police department, licensed solicitors that come door-to-door and sell you Comcast, magazines, whatever, whatever it is that they want to sell for future goods. Currently, we can only check them in Massachusetts. And typically, people that hold those positions transit, they go from state to state, because depending on what the weather is and where the, who they contracted by sending them. So, they could have committed a crime down in Florida, we're not aware. Typically, we, when we conduct a check in Massachusetts, if they have a local address, we're able to gain a lot of information. We deny a lot of applications based upon their convictions for felony or other serious illegal crimes. This, this bylaw allows us also to create a policy procedure, which I'll work with the board of selectmen to do. And if an applicant is denied a license based upon, based upon their criminal background checks, the proposed bylaw will require us to show them the results and allow them some time to either check or correct their, whatever their crime was, if they find some discrepancy with it. And we have to provide them with the criminal history that we found. As far as this bylaw allows for more informed and accurate fair assessment of licensed applicants. Thank you, town. If anybody has any questions, a full answer.
Further discussion, Mr. Luongo.
When I reviewed this and what I heard, it seems like the only one getting a fingerprint is the person applying for the license, and it doesn't include all the employees. And you mentioned Comcast, and I'm sure that every Comcast employee, yeah, not gonna get their fingerprint. And I'm thinking that, you know, obviously, the person is gonna be applying for the license is gonna make sure that there's no reason why his fingerprints would, would be an issue. So, I don't really see this as being too terribly effective. And the other thing is, I don't, you know, I tried to go through the fee section here, but I don't understand why this isn't paying for it, though. If somebody wants to apply for one of these licenses, why doesn't the fee for the license get adjusted so that it's self-supporting activity?
Chief Murphy.
To answer your first question, each individual license holder, as in the solicitor, they do have to apply individually. It's not a company that applies. It's handled solely by person to person. When I, when I mentioned Comcast, I was using that as an example. They typically will send in ten to fifteen people per day, come into the police department to get licensed to go door-to-door. So, each and every one of those particular persons that apply have to go through the background check. So, that, is that answer your first question?
You're gonna say the fingerprints of every employee or solicitor that's gonna prove potential exception?
It's individuals applying, that's right. As far as the fee goes, there is a, there is a fee built into this. A portion of the fee goes to the state and their, we'll find where it is. Shall be deposited into the Fire and Fingerprint Identification and Desert Verification Trust Fund. The remainder of the fee may be retained by the town for costs associated with the administration of the fingerprint system. I don't anticipate costs at this time. I have my administrator in town that's gonna be handling these duties. He works Monday through Thursday. And that's when we will set up each and every appointment, and we'll have to conduct an assessment throughout the year to see if it is gonna be cost-effective.
Further, thank you, chief. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Article eighteen, Mr. Prisco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town authorize pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, the Board of Health Clinic Revolving Fund, into which funds from immunization clinics and community health programs shall be deposited for use by the Board of Health to meet expenses for immunization clinics and community health programs, and further to authorize the expenditure of such funds by the Board of Health, a sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars for said purposes for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen as specified in Article eighteen as printed in the warrant.
For the board of selectmen's recommendation, Mr. Prisco.
Three to two in favor.
For the finance committee, Mr. Callahan.
Finance committee voting unanimously against this article. Our opposition to it is that the needs of the health department are covered, we believe, quite adequately in their operating budget. The influenza vaccine is acquired by them at no charge by the state, from state. The nurses who administer the vaccine are paid for by the town, and therefore, none of the fees that they collect for the shots, they get reimbursed for Medicare or Medicaid, can go into revolving fund, because the revolving fund is not used to acquire the service. The argument is made that the, the health department may want to do some other things. We've asked the health department what those other things are. They have not been specific. We've asked the Health Department what those other things are, they have not been specific and without any specificity. We can't recommend this. If something comes up where there needs to be an emergency transfer of funds to take care of the need of the Health Department, there is in place a reserve fund under control of the Finance Committee that could be used to deal with those issues. We see this as a non-problem and there is no need to create yet another revolving fund in the town.
Further discussion, Mr. Vino.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Vino, 11 Rock Street. Probably about a year or so ago, when all, I stand in favor of this article. And about a year or so ago, when there was the outbreak of the shingles, infection or whatever you want to call it, I had called the Board of Health, and I had asked them if they had had any plans to do the scenes of the town. And their truthful answer was, no, Joe, because we did not get the revolving out at the last town meeting. If we had gotten that, we may have had the money to do it. You know, I know you go to the Finance Committee, but, you know, to ask for money, the first thing they're going to say is, in an emergency. Well, you know, is this an emergency if people are going to die? I think it is. I ask you to pass this article.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Vino, the thing the answer you may have received is a little disingenuous because I, including the Finance Committee, unanimously opposed this article. I see it as a Health Department budget issue, not something that can be solved by revolving account. That would satisfy that particular inquiry you had in that occasion. I've listened to Mr. Fear on several occasions, give his presentation. With all due respect to Mr. Fear, I honestly don't understand from his presentation what he's looking to accomplish. He's been non-specific, he can't identify the reasons. So, I can't support him. I see it simply as things that he wants to do, he needs to come before us, be specific, and act as per the budget adjustment. Now, I believe the Board probably unanimously would support him. This isn't a mechanism to get it done.
Sir. Yeah. Gary Hart, 259 Elm Street. Having been chairman of the Threat and Board of Health, been on Board of Health since 1986. Just a couple of statements here. There's no appropriation of funds associated with this warrant article. By voting affirmative for it, there's no funds involved. This revenue is to be placed in the fund of the generation of insurance claims that the Health Department puts forward to insurance carriers. The fund allows the Board of Health to continue the administration of the flu vaccination program, in particular, if the state was to curtail or discontinue the flu vaccination program. We generate revenue to continue, allow us to continue those programs and serve the people of North Reading, particularly the elderly. More importantly, this gives us additional funding to deal with what I would call emergency health issues, such as the shingles issue that Mr. Vino mentioned, emergency response issues, which are very difficult to predict in advance for a fiscal year. We need to have the ability to respond to those in a timely fashion, an urgent health issue, whether it be equine encephalitis, which there's one positive, mosquitoes have been discovered in this town in town already. We don't want to be going to Finance Committee asking for funds on an absentee basis, case by case. If we have a small amount of funding available to us, which isn't costing the town anything, it gives the Board the ability to deal with emerging issues and emergencies. Also, this fund gives us the ability to place monies beyond the $10,000 into the general fund of the town. In other words, that money beyond the $10,000 is generated from the recovery of monies to the flu vaccinations from the insurance carriers, goes into the town's general fund. This is a no-brainer, okay? If you're in favor of the health and environment of the town of North Reading, I encourage you to support this warrant article, if you're not, don't.
Ms. Ericetti.
Thank you. I'm now responding as a school committee member, responding as a community member. Karen Ericetti, Southern Green, where are you drawing? I'm actually the public health, I dedicated my entire career to public health. Public health is not about emergencies. It is about sustaining community action and being able to be agile when public health needs arise. I understand there are mechanisms that the Board of Select and Finance Committee are referencing, but there's a little bit of context here. Other communities actually have revolving funds, it's because the Board of Health is not elected. They have a little bit less discretion, and they're reliant on the community to appropriate that and support when their emergency needs. This is a small amount of money, and I did a little bit of research on this issue, and I went around and looked at other communities that are similar to ours, and there are other, there are precedents to this in the community. Again, I understand the discretion and the control issues, but I think it's very important that we put public health first, we find a way to allow for contingency when we have clinic needs. Flu programs are not guaranteed in this state, and we need to have something there that says we can actually afford to do these clinics even when it may not be funded or there may not be appropriate resources to support that. So, again, I really support this. I encourage everyone here to consider supporting us. It is a small amount of money. I understand the precedent issue, but I think that this is, this discretion is appropriate and appropriate given what other communities have done.
Mr. Frisco.
I just want to be clear on a couple things. First is, we're not asking for any money in this particular article. It's to create a revolving account with a ceiling of $10,000. That means the Board of Health, if they can generate some additional revenues, that's appropriate to go into this account, they can only raise up to $10,000. So, they're not looking for any taxpayer money tonight into going forward. I was one of the Select in favor of this article, only because the Health Director, he's trying to come up with ways to give us some additional services in town without costing the taxpayer any money. And if he has an opportunity to generate some additional revenues through some of the programs that he runs, and some of the things that he's supported with the state, that's the only reason why I was in favor of this. Now, he has an account that when he has that opportunity and he has those additional revenues available to him, he has a place to put it, and then to create these programs to give this town additional services. So, I am in favor of this article.
Mr. Bagh.
Edna Graff, Law Road. A question on the expenditures out of this revolving account. Who authorized, who's authorized to spend this money? Is it the Board of Health or who else? There are other revolving accounts. I don't think it's carte blanche.
Mr. Delaney.
One hundred percent Board of Health. The motion was, and I read a piece of it, and further, to authorize the expenditure of such funds by the Board of Health.
So, it's under the purview of the Board? For the Board of Health? Mr. Callahan.
Just to make it clear, the Finance Committee is not opposed to providing the, for the health needs of the community, where the Board of Health is administering vaccine, influenza vaccine, shingles vaccines, or whatever they deem appropriate. We're saying this is not the appropriate vehicle for it. The budget is the appropriate vehicle. We've told the, this bear that we would support an increase in his budget, and all he needs to do is come and tell us what it is he wants to do. We haven't heard that. He's been very vague. The example with the shingles vaccine, getting a reserve fund transferred to Finance Committee is not a big deal. It's there for unexpected and unbudgeted items. We've done this over and over. We look at the warrant, we look at the list of items that we've covered during the years. This would, something of that nature certainly would have fallen in very appropriate funding from the reserve fund. So, we're not opposed to having the Health Department take care of the needs of the town's people. We're just saying this is not the vehicle. It is really unclear whether they can even spend anything out of it. We have to have some funding from some source, and it would not be the insurance reimbursements that they're apparently getting, because those insurance reimbursements are coming from the flu shots that are currently being administered. And the revolving fund would have had to pay for the services of the nurses to administer that. There is no money in the fund, they can't do that. So, if any money that comes in from Medicare or whatever other source to pay for those shots must go back to the general fund, because the general fund that is paying for the services to distribute those vaccines. So, we're not opposed to any of the initiatives that made them up by the Health Department. We're just saying this isn't the way to do it. We don't need to create another revolving fund.
Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With due respect to my former colleagues and hopefully present friends at the front of the room, this issue has been squirreled around for a number of years. First off, it is not taxpayer money that needs to go in. It's an account that is authorized to absorb up to $10,000 that the Board of Health has to generate. A previous speaker mentioned the shingles situation. The Board of Health Chairman mentioned the triple E. I've also heard the Board of Health mention disposing of disposable needles. And if an emergency comes and you've got to go through the procedures of the Finance Committee, that takes time. I would encourage this to be approved, and let's let it run, because you can also rescind it if it doesn't run, as people are reporting. So, I encourage you to vote yes.
With all due respect to the Finance Committee, I would urge everybody to support this article. We must support our Board of Health. They've been asking for this revolving fund for a number of years, and each year it comes before a town meeting, and there's opposition from the Finance Committee, in some cases from the Board of Select, in part because our Health Director isn't necessarily always articulate in describing the needs, and in many cases, he doesn't know what those needs are going to be. But I have great respect for our Board of Health, they're volunteers, they've been working very hard for the community, and I think at this point, we should support them and provide this non-tax payable revolving fund.
Mr. Norton.
John Norton, 279 Main Street. I agree with Mr. Jones, Mr. Messier, and some of the other speakers in favor of this. Having been a FinCon member years ago, I know exactly what the process is to get a transfer of funds. If you have an emergency epidemic, believe me, ladies and gentlemen, it's not that easy. So, don't let the FinCon fool you. It takes a process. You can laugh, but it takes a process. You know it as well as I do, okay? I would urge that we support this, not just for the Board of Health, but we have a lot of seniors in this community, and there are times that they are not always supported the way they should be. If you have an emergency situation, they need to have vaccinations, they need the services of the Board of Health. I think it's time to do the right thing by the Board of Health and by our seniors. I would urge that we pass this article. Thank you.
Sir.
John Hanchy, 18 Swan Horn Road. I'm wondering how money will get into this fund? If reimbursements from Medicare or whatever have to go into the general fund, how will this fund get any income, which might then be used for personal things? You know, I just don't understand what the use would be.
Mr. Fair.
We recently enrolled as a provider with Medicare.
Mr. Fair, not anyone knows you, so you might want to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Margaret Fair. I'm the Health Director for the Conoco Credit. We recently enrolled as a provider with Medicare in the roster bill for the cost of administration of seasonal flu vaccines. Vaccine is provided by the state. We also contracted with Conoco Medicine, which is a branch of UMass Medical, and we can also bill for administration of the flu vaccine with them. There seems to be some confusion on the part of the Finance Committee about how the fund can start, where the money can come from, or where it can. I've spoken with Tom Castle, yeah, attorney down in the corner, and he might be able
Derek Fly, COVID age, through town council, moderator. Any receipts that are received by, if there's revolving fund passes, any receipts received that relate to the programs that are authorized under the revolving fund can then go back into the revolving, never back into, it's erased. Any receipts received that relate to the program, if the revolving fund passes, would then up to the limit of $10,000 be put into that, into the revolving fund to be spent for the purposes of the revolving fund, which I believe in this article are for immunization clinics and other health-related community programs. You don't need an initial, I know that the term's been going back in force, sort of initial seed money. That doesn't need to come from the revolving fund. There would never be a revolving fund if that initial money hadn't come, hadn't come from the revolving fund. It can come in through the receipts that are received through the programs, which again, for this article, the immunization clinics and other community health programs. So, any receipts received from that program would go into the revolving fund up to, to be spent at the discretion of the Board of Health, up to a limit of $10,000 if it is
Mr. Jerby.
Steve Jerby, 21 Woodland Drive. I've been enjoying this town meeting a great deal. I've been sitting here thinking about the level of trust that has grown up within this community. We have passed some very large items with very little discussion because the transparency, the level of preparation, the trust among us has grown dramatically over the years. I think we're in danger of seeing that break down on this item. I would like to see us extending that same trust to the Board of Health. It's a $10,000 risk. It is taxpayer money, because if it doesn't go into this fund, it comes back to the general fund. But it can be rescinded if it's abused. I think we should be taking that chance in the hopes of seeing expanded services for the community, and because the people who have been working so hard on the Board of Health for so many years have done so with very little fanfare and a great personal expenditure of time and effort on their parts. They've done a fabulous job. We should be rewarding them by extending this bit of trust.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator. I move to adjourn this meeting.
On the motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.